It is nine o'clock, time to convene the Wayne County Board of Commissioners meeting. But our invocation today is by Commissioner Joe Doherty. Please bow our heads. Almighty and loving Father, Creator of heaven and earth, we praise you. You are the King of kings. We humbly ask your forgiveness of our sins. We are gathered here today to conduct business of Wayne County. Send us your Holy Spirit to be our God and give us the wisdom to understand every topic that we are going to discuss today. Enlighten our minds to make the best decisions for our county. Soften our minds and our hearts as we seek common ground. In Jesus' name, amen.
I have a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, benevolent, and just as for all.
Okay, I skipped the most important thing. If you have cell phones, we ask that you please turn them off, and cellphone use is prohibited in the Board of Commissioners meeting room. Thank y'all. Do I have a motion for the approval of the minutes for the October 10, 2021 meeting?
No move.
I have a motion on the floor. Any discussion? If no discussion, all show your favor right hand. Any opposed? Ms. Tannenbaum, any discussion or adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Good morning. We would like to add appointment committee recommendations after special presentation.
Okay.
And then, under our consent agenda, we would like to add number 12. Motion to adjust food line lease to include an additional six months at a reduced rate, not to exceed $30,000, pending the attorney's approval and appropriate budget amendment. And these are the only two changes we have this time.
Thank you. Special presentation. I have a motion on the floor that we accept it. Agenda, any discussion? All in favor, show a sign of the right hand.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Special presentation, Ms. Tannenbaum.
Thank you. First, we have number one, motion to approve 2021 County National Family Literacy Day proclamation. And Ms. Jane Gable... Thank you, Ms. Gable. We appreciate you being here today, and we'll have her read this for us.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm quite honored to be here as a member of the local David Williams DAR chapter. This is our proclamation for National Family Literacy Day for November 1st. Whereas National Family Literacy Day, established by the 103rd Congress in 1994 and now marking its 27th anniversary on November 1st, 2021, highlights the importance of reading and learning for the entire family and emphasizes the impact that parents and guardians have on their child's learning. And whereas this day is celebrated across America each year and focuses on special activities and events that showcase the importance of family literacy programs that empower families and build a nation of readers. And whereas literacy programs across the United States will observe National Family Literacy Day by holding read aloud story times, reading sessions, book drives, workshops, and family activities at schools, libraries, and community centers to encourage literacy. And whereas as many as one in six adults struggle with reading and writing, and by learning to read, individuals can gain self-respect and confidence and strive towards goals that otherwise would not be achievable. And whereas the National Society of the Daughters of the American Revolution is a nonprofit, non-political volunteer women's service organization dedicated to promoting patriotism, preserving American history, and securing America's future through better education by children and adults. And whereas education being one of the cornerstones of the National Society of the Daughters of American Revolution, the David Williams Chapter, Goldsboro, North Carolina, is committed to increasing literacy by promoting and supporting literacy programs. Now therefore, the Wayne County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim November 1st, 2021 as National Family Literacy Day in Wayne County and encourages our county to engage in programs and activities to make children and adults in Goldsboro the best readers in North Carolina. Adopted this 19th day of October, 2021. Chairman George Wayne Acock Jr.
Thank you, ma'am. Do I have a motion? Will you approve this proclamation?
No move.
I have a motion on the floor. All in favor, show a sign of the right hand. Unanimous, Madam Clerk. And thank you.
Well, thank you. This is actually, the Literacy Promotion Committee is just getting started this year. It has been going in the National DAR since 1984, but it's only, it's only right that we do support what is in our community. And we can do that in three different ways. We honor our partnership with organizations already promoting their mission is to promote literacy, both for children and adults. And what I have done is I've already connected with Literacy Connections here in Wayne County because they support adults as well as the families with their family literacy. I've also connected with the public library to do some projects with the library. We're also focused, of course, on our future readers, not only adults, but of course, children. And we can do that by our members going into the community and volunteering in a, in many different ways, whether it's volunteering, whether it's mentoring, whether it's giving donations, or whether it's even collecting books. And another way, the third way, of course, is getting PR out to the community, how important it is, the journey of learning to read, because once you learn to read, once you get your education, no one can take that away. So this year, we're proud to come before you with this proclamation and to have your support, both of the city and the county, that this is an area that, of course, we all need to support, all of our families in our county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your kind words, and thank you for that quote, "Once you get your education, no one can take that away."
That's correct, and I hope as our children begin their journey, and their journey doesn't start with reading kindergarten, it begins as birth. It even begins before that because of the parents are reading, both fathers and mothers to the infant in vitro. The baby is hearing the rhythm, the rhythm of reading, and believe it or not, that carries through when they begin to read. So it begins before birth, and we hope with our early childhood emphasis that is in this county with our daycares, especially for all our schools and education, what we've all been through and looking at where the children are, it takes a whole community. So hopefully, this proclamation and our help with DAR in any way can help our community.
Thank you, ma'am.
So thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Gable. Next, we have a motion to approve the 2021 National First Responders Day in Wayne County proclamation. I do want to thank our representatives from our first responder here in the county to be here today. Their group we're very proud of and very much lean on on a daily basis. But, Mr. Chairman, I believe you've asked Commissioner Acock, or Commissioner Gurley to read that.
Yes, sir.
The 2021 National First Responders Day in Wayne County proclamation. Whereas Wayne County first responders may be our family members, neighbors, friends, church members, and coworkers who are trained as law enforcement officers, firefighters, paramedics, emergency medical technicians, and dispatchers to provide assistance in the time of our need. And whereas Wayne County first responders are the ones who show up in the face of danger and natural disasters because they are committed to serve others. And whereas Wayne County first responders have responded, witnessed and assisted in tragedies, heartbreaks, helplessness, and disbelief that went unrecognized. And whereas Wayne County first responders do not have the ability to change the course of an event, but their skills and compassion can help make a situation better. And whereas Wayne County first responders are heroes who have performed miracles, supported others, and have given part of themselves, sometimes their lives, to save others. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Wayne County Board of Commissioners does hereby deem it an honor and pleasure to proclaim October 28, 2021, as First Responders Day in Wayne County, on the occasion of honoring our first responders for their honor, courage, and sacrifice. Now therefore, be it further resolved, the Wayne County Board of Commissioners pays special tribute to the family members of the Wayne County first responders for their untold sacrifice and the support they give daily to ensure the safety of our community. This the 19th day of October, 2021. George Wayne Acock Jr., Chairman Carroll Bowden, Clerk for... Mr. Chairman, I will ask that all of our first responders that we have in present today, would they stand, please, to be recognized? We thank you for all that you do for our community and our county and surrounding counties. We know it's sometimes just a thankless job, but we appreciate what you do for us.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Chairman, therefore, I'd like to make a motion that we approve 2021 National First Responders Day in Wayne County proclamation.
I have a motion on the floor. Any discussion? Commissioner Williamson, you have anything?
No, sir. I was going to make the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say something. We just went through a tragic heartbreak thing at our home. I lost my sister-in-law, and I remember the heartbreak and the first responders that came up and how supportive they were and how professional they were. I cannot say enough about how they made things a whole lot easier for us because she died at home, and they were there for us and stood by us while we waited, you know, for the removal of my sister-in-law. So I cannot say enough how much was given to us at that time by the first responders, and I would like to personally thank every one of you for what you done. It really helped us through a very tragic moment, and thank you from my heart.
Anyone else? I'd also like to thank y'all. I've been around for quite a while, and we've seen a lot of tragedies in Wayne County, and the county would have had a hard time pulling through if it hadn't been for people like y'all. I know some of you are just volunteers, some of you is on this for a career, but you're in it more than just for a paycheck. I mean, you chose a profession that is sometimes can be very difficult, but I know that you're doing it for more than just a paycheck. You're doing it because you love to help someone when they're in need, and again, I'd like to thank all of you. And I look forward to seeing somebody at 1:00. Okay, I have a motion on the floor. All in favor, show a sign of the right hand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next, I do want to introduce Dr. Ed Crew, President of the University of Mount Olive. We appreciate Ed being here. Ed is no stranger to Wayne County. Ed is from Wayne County, lives in Wayne County, former school superintendent of Johnson County. Ed and I had lunch about a month ago, and just hearing the incredible things that he is doing at the university and what an asset that is for Wayne County, we did want Dr. Crew to come and make a presentation to the board, and we appreciate you taking your time being here today, sir.
I need to add one thing you didn't say. He's the son of one of the best ag teachers there's ever been.
I appreciate that. Don't make me cry. It is a privilege to be here, Mr. Chairman and Board of Commissioners. I have to tell you, though, being either deputy superintendent or superintendent for 15 years, when I realize I'm coming to a county commissioner meeting, I sort of get the heebie-jeebies. I feel like I need to be asking for 50 or 60 million dollars, but I can assure you, I'm not here today to do...
They've already done that. We know how to say no.
Well, you know, I will say again, most of my career was in Johnson County. I'm from the Hunter-Pikeville area, but for most of the years as a superintendent, we had a great relationship with the commissioners and the county manager. Rick Hester was just a great guy, and we had, I think, a trust relationship built where we just sort of carried on and done what we needed to do, and it was, it seemed real good. But it is a privilege to be here today, and you know, I'll promise you, I won't be here for just a few minutes. I will say, you don't need a amen corner, but there is a literacy problem in this country, being a former school superintendent, and I believe part of it's coming from using technology as much as we do. And I'm also a retired volunteer fireman, and I appreciate both of those first two things that you've done today as really needed. But I came just to give you an update on the university. You know, I have been at the university now for, well, let me back up. And I know he gets tired of me saying this, but I went to live in Waters Freewill Baptist Church, and every time I stand in front of Mr. Wayne, me and his boy were cutting up one Sunday, and he got both of us, and so I get the heebie-jeebies from that, too. But anyway, I respect that so much. But I've been a free, my family's been Freewill Baptist all our life, and university is sponsored by the original Freewill Baptist, and we've always supported university. But you know, sometimes you really don't know what you have until you spend time there. And we supported university, but we never really spent a lot of time. And my sister graduated from there many years ago, and a year and 10 months, I retired as school superintendent several years ago, and I was asked to help on some academic fronts at university. And that was, January was a year ago, so a year and 10 months. And I was not, about six weeks later, I was asked to be dinner and president. We had a $3 million hole in our budget, really didn't have enough money really to make payroll by the end of the year. Probably shouldn't say that out loud, but it's the truth. And then we had this thing called COVID hit. One of my first duties as president was to go out to a rec scene in the middle of the night where we eventually lost four of our lacrosse players, I mean, you know, women's lacrosse players, one was a baseball player. And then I had to meet that family at the morgue the next day who come down from New York to try to convince them not to, to view the body. And so it has been a really rough ride, but I can tell you that I am so proud of the people at that university, and I know we don't, do not get funding from the county from the university, but I do want you to know the economic impact that it has on our county. And I do have a PowerPoint, and I don't even know, I don't even think I'll use that, but it's okay. You know, we have, we have, we have about 1,000 students on campus every day. We have about 2,000, including the AGP enrollment. You know, we used to have all the site locations, New Bern, we've shut those down since I've been there. We were, online education really put a, put a hole in that, you didn't need those sites. So we've made a lot of decisions in that regard, but we have a lot of students, and we have 24, if I got, I think I'm right, we have 24 different countries represented on our campus. Most of those come for athletic reasons, but it is a very diverse campus. We have some really unique programs. You know, I always figured I was about halfway smart, more smart than my daddy, but I was about halfway smart. But we've got a dummy on campus now, a mannequin, starting our business, I mean, our Bachelor's in Science and Neuro BSN program. This mannequin, and I encourage you, if you ever need a road trip one day, to come out and look at this, this mannequin will give birth with all the stuff that goes along with giving birth. It will grow tumors, it will grow cancer, it will give blood, it will speak 42 different languages, it will yell, it will say, "I've got a fever, my stomach hurts." So we've got a dummy on campus, a whole lot smarter than I am. But it's really getting some attention. I think there's only a few of those in the country, and so we're excited about what that might do for our healthcare system moving forward. Our new chief academic officer is a physical therapist by trade, and so we're really looking at maybe growing our health services. We started a mental health counseling program, I'll share this with you. We had a phone call with one of the head pediatricians from Duke University back several months ago, and get this now, out of four, every four adolescents, at Duke Pediatrics at the time, three had some sickness, COVID, whatever, and one out of four had mental health issues. 25% of the kids at Duke at that time had mental health issues. And here's what he said, and I'll never forget, he said, "Those three with COVID and cancer and other issues, most of them will recover, but the one with the mental health issues, it will be with them in some regard probably for the rest of their life." So we have started a mental health counseling program. I think we had 196 people apply for 26 open spots. So it just tells you the interest in that. So I say all that to you to say that I really believe the University of Mount Olive is doing well. It is a very tough time at higher ed. Who would have ever thought that Carolina and state would have never, would not require the SAT to get in school anymore? And part of that is because of the fewer people who are applying to go to school. We're in a world now where businesses say, "You show me somebody who will work, we'll train them, teach them what we want them to know," and I understand that. But there are some things that we need education for. We are ranked one of the most affordable private universities in North Carolina, and there are 36 of those, I think, and we're all fighting for a reduced number of students to go to school. But I just wanted to come today and tell you, let you know who's leading the show down there, and I'm not sure that I'm lead, we've got a great group of people who work with me every day, and I just want to sit back, let them take off with it. But look forward to being engaged more with the county. We have signed, and I'm not sure why some of this hasn't been done in the past, but we are working real close with Wayne Community College so that students can go there for two years and come straight to us, reduce tuition, and try to grow, and we're, probably I don't know if I should say this either, but we have reached out, and the new superintendent in Wayne County Schools is working close with us, and I look forward to seeing a great marriage between the public schools and the community college and the university where students don't have to go anywhere out of Wayne County but to, but here to get their degree. So anyway, just wanted to come and share that with you, and I'll be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions?
What stands in front of you is a proven fact that we got qualified people in Wayne County to run, to run things, and I'll meet that for the bottom of all.
I appreciate that, Mr. Carroll. We got a lot of good people here, that's for sure.
And we do appreciate, you know, it's very encouraging to hear you say that the public school system, the community college, and the university is working together. I was at the college, the community college, when you signed the letter with Dr. Pfeiffer to work together, and that's what it's all about, is educating our students. Sometimes I say our children, but we've got students that are not children. I mean, we've got grown people that's further in their education, and if we can get the three working together, and I'm not saying that they had to work together in the past, but there's always room for improvement, and that sounds very, very encouraging.
Well, appreciate it. We've got a lot of work to do, but...
I'm definitely encouraged to see that you have a mental health program going on, because I think that's one thing that's been lacking in education, you know, recognizing the symptoms, recognizing that there's a need there, and someone actually doing something about it. So I commend you.
Yeah, it's a little aggravating when you have that, and of course, I get it, I understand the reason these accrediting agencies, they sort of keep up, they want to make sure the quality's high, but when you have over 150 people apply and you can only take 20, it creates hardships.
Yeah, it does.
Because you, now you've got to fund the program with just 20 people paying tuition, and the private world, you know, you live on by what you bring in, and there's no extra money anywhere, so. But that's a challenge, and that's a different world that I live in, that I've lived in in the past, but I actually like it. It makes you, makes you do things different and earn your way.
Are y'all looking to extend that program in the future?
Yes, so we, the original plan was to have two cohorts a year to start, and we are starting three, a summer program, so. And the cohort model, for those of you, so you have a group of 20 people who start, and they stay together and they work together through the whole process, rather than just coming and going and doing it at their own level. So it's, and we're starting, you know, there's several programs I'm not mentioning, and you should know this, about three weeks ago, and I know my time's up, so.
Oh, you're...
Yeah, it's a former superintendent, can't know how to shut up. We had the, I make sure I get this right, we had the, the national marketing team from Case International, we have a strong ag program out there, from the country, from the United North America, marketing head from Case International and his leadership team from all over the country, they were on our campus about three weeks ago, and they are looking, out of all the universities in America, they have chosen us to be a potential partner to train all of their customers, their employees, and their technology folks in precision ag. And, you know, that's huge for us, and it will bring a lot of resources to us. To be quite honest with you, we're not quite ready for it. I approved some things this morning before I came here to make sure we hired the people who can move it forward, but just thank you, Case International hires technicians in Iowa or wherever, and we're to send them here to get trained in precision ag. And this stuff, and I've been in ag all my life, but I don't, I don't even have, I mean, they pull down a screen on our campus, and they could see every, on this screen, all the newer stuff, they could see every Case International tractor that was moving in this country. And they could click on it and look at the telemetry, and they could tell sitting in our classroom what that tractor was pulling and how deep they were pulling that implement, just based on technology. You know, so anyway, I don't know why I got off on that tangent, it's just, I'm learning, and again...
I like to visit that.
Yeah, it's, it's very interesting. Anyway, we've got a lot of work to do, we're not out of the woods, we're writing a little SACH reaffirmation, which is a 10-year process, I inherited that, too, and we've got to get our revenues up, we got to do, we, but my goal to the Board of Trustees is we're not going to spend more money than we bring in anymore, and so to put us on solid ground for the future. So I look forward to working with you and this county in any way we can to make Wayne County a better place.
And the reason you brought up the agriculture, because you're a farm boy, you know how to pick corn, you know how to pick beans, you know how to crop tobacco. I mean, it's, his background is education, but I know where he comes from.
Top the crew.
Yes, sir.
First off, thank you for coming. I think this board, we, we appreciate what the University of Mount Olive is all about, and we also advocate for Mount Olive as a whole. We see the importance of Mount Olive. A lot of times, people tend to forget that Mount Olive is part of Wayne County, and I think that this board is trying to change the dynamics of that, trying to bridge that gap. You know, a lot of times, your students, they just stay in Mount Olive, opposed to venturing out and even coming to Golds... out and even coming to Goldsboro, and I think we need to make it an easier transition for them to be able to come over here as well, and vice versa. We're going to be advocating for the water system there, because, believe it or not, eventually Mount Olive College will expand a lot more with the direction that y'all are going.
That's a great comment, and again, sorry, Craig, you folks need, I think you need to know, so there is an issue down there with sewage and what have you, and we have, we're going to be starting a comprehensive campaign, our facilities need upgrading tremendously. I mean, some of it is just not where we need to be. One of the, a couple of things we hear when we talk to students, number one, they want a student center, we do not have a student center, so we have plans for a student center, now we can't even move forward with it right now. You know, I know there's some work on that, that's not a topic for today, but... And the other thing I hear from parents when they come in, especially, you know, they bring them in, drop them off, they know a lot of the things that students want to do are in Goldsboro, and how are they going to get to Goldsboro? And so, you know, we're looking at possible ways to create some better transit back and forth, and I do hear that, it bothers me, I hear that from down there, you know, we're on the wrong side of the river, well, you know, that's here.
And I think overall, when I used to serve on the GWTA board, we were advocating to get better transportation. I'm not, I don't know which commissioner's on the board as of now, but that's something that we definitely need to work on, making it an easier transition to get to college if you live in Goldsboro, and to come over here if you want to just have some entertainment. So if you can...
Oh, yeah, we're working on that.
Okay, great.
Well, that was a question that come up, unfortunately, after the wreck, you know, what happens when all that happens, was what do you do to try to make sure students don't have to drive? I mean, there's a few things, you know, if we can't stop planes from flying into World Trade Center, and we can't stop Adam and Eve from sending in the garden, and some things we're not going to do in life, and keeping young adults from drinking and doing those type things, we're just not going, so we can pray for them, and I pray for them every day. But one of the questions you get asked, what do you do to make sure they're safe? Parents ask those questions when they send their kids off to school, and they should ask those questions, and we've got to be able to, at the university, provide better answers. And I think in time, working together, we can all do that.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you. Great being here.
And Mr. Chairman, I want to thank Dr. Kru. Dr. Kru reached out to me and wanted to have lunch, and we're planning to do that on a regular basis, and really making sure that this board understands, again, the assets and what's going on at the university.
Right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. We need to drop down now, we have a public hearing scheduled to receive comments on proposed amendments to the Wayne County subdivision ordinance. Each speaker will have a three-minute time limit. Do we have anyone to sign up? Madam Clerk?
Well, first, we need to let Barry explain it, but no, sir, we do not have anyone to sign up.
Okay. Sir, if you would explain it to us?
Yes, sir. Good morning.
And while you're explaining it, when you get it all figured out, you got to help us out, figure out this COVID stuff, too.
Okay. All right, well, this, our planning board, the Wayne County Planning Board started this process last year because of some concerns with larger subdivisions having one access and the ability for emergency services, if there's something happened at that access, as much as it may be because being able to get in and out with their just one. And as part of that process, we brought an amendment to you earlier this year where if you had over 100 lots, you would have to have a secondary access, full service access. At that point, this board requested that we talk with some of the developers, you know, sit down with them in the development community and see if there were any other alternatives that might work. And so our planning board has done that over the past several months, probably the past six months or more, have had several meetings with them. And so what we have before you today is a kind of agreed-upon middle ground, I guess you could say, that I think both the planning board and the development community feel like they can work with this to address some of those concerns with limited access in the subdivisions. So basically, I will quickly just explain that now, when you have between 101 to 200 lots, there's an option there for you, instead of putting in a full service access, you can still do that if you want, but instead of doing that, you can do an emergency access, other jurisdictions are doing that around us. So we tried to model that after them, we do have some specifications for that, though, in terms of what it would look like, how it's designed for that emergency access. And then also within, with that 101 to 200 lot category, in lieu of doing an emergency access, you can do what we're calling a wider access design, which would be a wider entrance in, you would have a median as well, potentially, that would come down through the middle. So you'd have an ingress lane that would come in, your median, and egress that would go out, kind of like you see if you're familiar with Mears Bluff on Highway 111 or Haytown Road, that type of design is what the planning board was looking at with something like that. And so those are the two alternatives that kind of came out of this, and once you get to the 201, 201st lot, then you would have to put in a full service access at that point, a second one. But as I said, it looks like at this point, with our amendment, we did get some consensus there, so our planning board has recommended approval of this amendment, as you see before you. With that, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Questions?
Craig, just have a comment.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for all the work you and your team has put into this.
Oh, thank you.
Glad to see it come to some closure.
Yes, sir.
And this has been in discussion for years.
Yeah.
When I was on the planning board, it was discussed, and just, everyone could get the two to come together, but thank you for your hard work in making this happen.
And Mr. Chairman, I too want to thank them for reaching out to the developers and having some meetings and actually coming with a compromise recommendation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we...
He's got to close him for... If no one signed up, declare this public hearing now closed. This is an item that if the board seems fit, we can go ahead and approve today.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the modification to the subdivision ordinance and approve the amendment for secondary access.
I have a motion on the floor, any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor, show sign of right hand. Motion carries unanimously, Madam Clerk. Okay, back up to the Appointments Committee, Commissioner Gurley.
Yes, sir. The Appointments Committee met this morning, and we had the following recommendations. The Wayne Health Board reappointments of Kate Daniels, Ken Gerard, and Dr. Lenzaris. They're on. That is, now, are we supposed to be voting on this today, correct?
You certainly can, because these are reappointments recommended by the appropriate boards.
So that would be in form of a motion.
But if the board so chooses, they can wait two weeks.
That would be in form of a motion, Mr. Chair.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor, any discussion? If none, all in favor, show sign of right hand.
Also, the Wayne County Health Board has submitted the position for dentist, as Dr. Emily Pickleton, to fulfill that position, and that is in form of a motion, Mr. President. Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor that we appoint Dr. Emily Pickleton, and my understanding is that this is, that they request a dentist or require the dentist to be on that board.
They advertise for applications for dentists, and Dr. Pickleton was the only one that responded, and she's agreed to serve on the board of health.
Okay, okay, I have a motion on the floor, any discussion? If none, show sign of right hand.
That's all we have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gurley. Mr. Henneckut, unfinished business?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have one thing under unfinished business, motion to approve moving one monthly meeting of the Board of Commissioners to an afternoon meeting as requested by Commissioner Bevan Foster, and I'll turn that over to Commissioner Foster.
Yes, this originally was brought to our attention by Commissioner Williams, and I've researched all, a lot of counties, I can't say all of them, in North Carolina, and a lot of them have meetings, both of their meetings in the afternoon, some have just one in the afternoon, and the thing is, is that giving your public time to come in and address concerns and stuff. Most of our workforce works in the morning around this time, I think it's around 70, 80% of the workforce works during the day, so they're not able to come in, and I think doing that would allow, you know, our citizens to come in during that time, that would be a good thing to do. And, you know, I know change is hard sometimes, but, you know, like I said, most counties have at least one meeting in the afternoon, that I researched, anyway, I can't say, I researched every last one of them, but what I researched.
Is that in form of a motion?
I just want, I have a comment, Mr. Chair. First off, thank you, Commissioner Foster, for bringing that back up. I mean, we, again, we did bring it up during the retreat. Commissioner Doherty, he agreed that we did have more people come out, that we could have more people come out if we did have at least one meeting per month. I think it's just fair to our citizens that do want to be involved to have a meeting once a month. I know that Commissioner Hardeston said it might be kind of challenging in the evening, but someone made a suggestion that, you know, we would get your car serviced for that particular day. I think it's important to include, or I know when we were city councilmen, we had bigger turnouts because people wanted to come out and get a lift, and I think that's good for this county.
I got a question, what time were we talking about?
I'm, I mean, I saw where some meetings were four, some were five, you know, none, I don't think too many were later than that, starting their work session, you know, so, I mean, I don't want to go too much later than that, but to give people time to get out, to get off of work, you know, around four or five o'clock, we started our work sessions at four or so, that probably would give some, a few more people time to come in and speak if they wanted to speak in our regular session, so.
Mr. Chairman.
We could all speak on the time, I'm not trying to dictate the actual time.
Question, Doherty.
During our work session, I did mention the fact that I supported having a quarterly basis or every so often, but to designate a meeting every month in the evening, and it's not in the afternoon, it's really in the evening, because if you start at four, five o'clock, it's going to be seven or eight o'clock when we wrap things up, so it'll be in the evening. And I agree in regards to the fact of, it's real questionable in regards to the turnout, because we in the past have had some evening meetings and actually had less of a turnout, but I'm okay with an attempt on a trial basis, but not to actually designate every, every month that one of the meetings would be in the evening, at this point, because I'd like to see what participation we have, and whether or not it's worth the actual change.
Well, Chair, my thing right now is, we look at the participation we have now, which is next to none, you know what I mean? Even on times that we are presenting a family with something, that family has to take off of work a lot of times to come in just to get whatever we're presenting to the family or whatever, so, because most people work during the day, or if they own a business, they will have to close their business down to come in, but if you were to do that in the afternoon, that would give them time to come in in the afternoon, maybe when they're not at work or whatever. And to do something on a trial basis or some random schedule, yes, you're probably not going to have a turnout, because that's not consistency. So, but if you give someone something consistency and give them dates and times and saying, this is what we're going to do, and we're going to do this monthly, it changes, you know, you will have a buildup sooner or later. Of course, every meeting, you might not have a lot of people come and speak, but I think more people will come than what's coming right now, and what has came since I've been here. And like I said, if you go and look, Raleigh, Carteret, Craven, I think even Lenore, Mecklenburg, I mean, all of the bigger counties, and just a lot of counties have a meeting in the afternoon, most of them have both of their meetings in the afternoon. You know, I mean, this morning thing is, I mean, it's okay, but still, you know, you have people that work that want to participate, and it's fine to be able to watch while you're at work, and most can't even watch while they're at work. So by the time we've done something, they can't, it's too late to even respond to it. So, I mean, I just think it's just right for the citizens of Wayne County, so they'd be more inclusive in our decision-making and be more inclusive in our meetings.
Anyone else? I usually try to, as Chairman, not make as many comments, but I ought to agree with Commissioner Doherty, you know, the previous board tried it, the previous board before that, that board tried it, and each time it failed. I'm not saying that, you know, that I'm not willing to try it again, but to designate, until we try it, you know, I'm not for designating a meeting in the afternoon on a regular basis until it can be tried.
Chair, I'm asking you a question real quick, what is fail?
No one showed up.
Okay, but you still had a meeting, correct?
Yes.
So would you say that these meetings fail too when no one shows up to speak?
Well...
I mean, just asking a question.
I mean, no one showing up is no one showing up, I mean, whether it's day or night.
So I'm asking a question, yes or no, would you consider these morning meetings to be a fail because no one shows up?
No, sir.
Okay, then, so why would an afternoon meeting be a fail if no one shows up? It's still a meeting, correct?
Okay.
I have a motion on the floor, I have a motion, discussion ended, I have a motion on the floor, all in favor of a nighttime meeting, show your sign of right hand. All opposed?
Oh, it will not change for nothing.
Vote for old Mr. Henneckut.
All right, yes, sir. Next is our consent agenda. As board members, we did add a number 12 to the consent agenda, and we did go over this with respect to our pre-agenda meeting, and we present this for your approval.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make sure we approve the consent agenda. I have a motion on the floor, we approved the consent agenda, any discussion?
Yes, sir. Item 12, we had Commissioner Aicott stated that she wanted it to state general statute, which I located, general statute 153A.
Number 11.
I'm sorry?
Number 11, not number 12.
Well, number 11, thank you. General statute 153A, 103, each sheriff and registered deeds, an exercise in authority granted by this section, each sheriff and registered deeds elected by the people has the exclusive right to hire, discharge, and supervise employees in his office. Thank you.
I thought that was for the...
Yeah, that, Ms. We, or Commissioner Wins, that would be for new business number two. I'm sorry.
I thought she was looking for the number 11 on the design bill, is that correct?
No, no, sir. It was for the discussion of the COVID.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry.
Should I rescind that until we get to the new business two?
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the consent agenda, show sign of right hand. All opposed?
Okay, thank you, Chairman. Then under new business, motion to establish a public hearing on Tuesday, November 2nd, 2021, at 9:30 a.m. in the commissioners' meeting room in the Wayne County Courthouse Annex at 224 East Walnut Street, Goldsboro, North Carolina, regarding the proposed voter district plan for the Wayne County Board of Commissioners. The purpose of the public hearing is to gather public comment and input on the proposed Board of Commissioners voter districts prior to being considered by the Board of County Commissioners. of Commissioners voter districts prior to being considered by the Board of County Commissioners.
Do I have a motion that we schedule this, uh, public hearing?
So move.
I have a motion on the floor that we establish a public hearing on November the second at nine thirty a.m. Uh, any questions or any comments?
Mr. Chair, just to make you aware, as soon as this meeting is over, we will be placing those maps and information on our website. So the copy of the existing voter district map and the proposed voter district map.
Okay. I have a motion on the floor. Any discussion? If none, all in favor, show sign of right hand. Any opposed?
Is that opposed?
Yes.
Uh, and then number two, motion to amend the vaccine policy passed by the Board of Commissioners on September twenty-one, twenty twenty-one, to consider including non-vaccinated employees as requested by Commissioner Foster.
This is an action item. Any discussion?
So move. And also.
I'd like to amend that policy to basically rescind the policy.
I have an amendment. I will need to vote on the amendment first. Mr. Parker?
Yes, sir.
I have an amendment, I have a, uh, amendment and a motion on the floor that we rescind the policy. Uh, all in favor, show sign of right hand. All opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we amend the, uh, motion, uh, to keep the existing COVID-nineteen policy in place as, as currently written.
With the exception, may I ask her? May I ask her? May I add, and number eleven, the sheriff of registered deeds shall have sole discretion as to what extent this policy shall apply to their respective departments and add the general statutes one fifty-three A, one oh three.
Well, that currently is on our existing policy.
Well, well, she wanted our, our, um, Commissioner Aicoff, she wanted to stipulate.
So in other words, add that, uh.
This general statute one fifty-three A.
If you would add that, uh, general statute as reference to item eleven on our existing policy.
That just answers a lot of questions on people who's reading that to have reference.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chair, the motion that stands now is to keep the policy as is, or we're going to?
As is, with, with changing and adding to, uh, item eleven, the actual general statute.
So you aren't including the unvaccinated?
No, we're not.
So, so what?
We're keeping the policy as is. This is my motion.
Did the last motion pass or fail?
Failed.
Okay, okay.
Make sure everybody knows this motion is to keep it as is, so we're not adding unvaccinated employees.
Right. We're, we're just adding that one section, a general statute, to define the sheriff's department and registered deeds employees.
Right.
Mr. Parker, is, is Commissioner Williams, is his a motion, uh, that needs to be voted on to add the general statute numbers?
Like if Commissioner Daughtry was accepting that.
As part of his motion?
Yes, I, I included it as part of my motion.
Okay.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor, show sign of right hand.
Which one are you voting on? I'm so sorry.
That is my amendment, with, to keep the policy as it is, just adding the statute, the general statute.
All opposed?
That was four, yes, and three, no, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
One second, please.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I abstained, um, based on the fact that it was a partial motion that I agreed upon, so.
You abstained from voting?
Yes, I did. So that's a no.
That's a yes.
That's a yes.
Well, I vote against it, because I didn't have a problem with, I didn't have a problem with us including the non-vaccinated, but I definitely wanted to put in motion eleven, the, the general statute. Is it, is it clear what I'm trying to explain?
I'm, I'm clear. I just, I need to be clear on the, um, the actual votes. So, um, Mr. Chairman, if you can actually call for the votes for yes to, um, leave the policy as is, but add the general statute numbers, can we have the individuals that say their name if they're voting yes for this?
Mr. Uh, counsel, uh, we in fact have already voted on that, uh, am I correct? And as such, Commissioner Williams abstained, which in fact did in fact count as a yes vote by our, by our rules. So as such, the motion passed. Am I correct?
That is my understanding. Based on your rules, if you don't vote, it's a positive.
Well, I didn't have clarity, and that's why I'm not just discuss the clarity in regard to it.
We've already voted.
I mean, I mean, I mean, we've already voted and, you know, I don't know what the procedure is. I'm not going to call for a revote until I get clarification from counsel.
In the initial vote, um, who voted no in the initial vote? And that would not be?
The initial vote is on this, on this one, the one they just.
The, the vote just a moment ago on this motion, who voted no?
Four voted no, still.
No, three voted no.
No, Ms. Parker voted no.
It was three or four? I don't know. I thought Ms. Parker just raised her hand, but.
I only saw the revote, no. Did you vote no initially, Ms. Aicoff?
Well, I'm just trying to figure out what I'm voting for.
I, you did not raise your hand during the, that I was aware of the first.
I was voting for the general statute being.
Yes, and that's what I was voting for.
But it shouldn't have been all put together, was the problem. I mean, it confused, uh, it confused several, uh, commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, can we vote on the matter again? Can I make a motion to actually, um, and, and I'll ask the general counsel on this?
I think what I understood was that the clerk was not sure how people were voting, and that's why she was asking each individual to do it, so she could have the names listed in, in the thing. And I think she could do that. But if, hey, you don't have the authority to abstain, if you're here, you've got to vote, and if you don't actually vote yes, if you don't vote at all, the counsel's advised to vote the yes vote.
Well, I was, well, what can we do to retroact that? Because this, this motion hasn't been completed yet, because we're still in discussion. So.
No, I took, I took a vote.
You, you took a vote, but it was like, again, even how Commissioner, um, Aicoff, she was confused pertaining to what we were voting on. So for fairness, if there was some confusion, we need to clear that up. And me, in our work session, we were discussing that we needed to have clarity when it came to the sheriff's department and the registered deeds. That's what I was adding. So in all due fairness, that should be on a resolution, and then we have a vote based on if we're going to have it, where there're going to be employees who aren't vaccinated, if it's agreed upon, and employees that are vaccinated. I think that's just fair.
Well, you know, what we think is fair one way or another, that's not what we're going to go by. We're going to go by what counsel advises us that we can do.
Can someone give me clarity? That's because we're still in discussion.
It's good. We've already voted on it. I mean, we were discussing it, but, but the action has already been voted on, so I got to have clarification from counsel.
Well, I'm asking our attorneys now to give us some clarity and, if possible, show me statute so that it makes sense to me.
Statute.
The procedure that, uh, the rules of procedure that have been adopted by the Board of Commissioners indicate that if you do not vote, your vote is counted as a positive vote, a yes vote. Do not have the county commissioners under the statute, and I don't have the right in front of me, do not have the right to abstain unless there is a personal financial thing that causes them to have a conflict of interest.
So what's the fear in us? Because now we have clarity on this document, this resolution. What is the problem with there being a revote? Is there, is there, is, is there a fear that it won't go in someone's favor?
Can I just ask a question?
Yes, yes, sir.
You're concerned that the statute wasn't included in it?
That's correct.
But I think the statute is now included. What you voted on was the statute being included in it.
Commissioner Daughtry made the motion that statute be end.
What I'm saying is, first, we needed to have a document that said what we wanted in there. And that's what I was trying to, to put in place. After that is in there, now we have a clear understanding of what's on it, but there was never a clear understanding if we were voting for, um, if we were voting for the individuals that already have been vaccinated to get the time, the, the leave time, or the, the people who aren't vaccinated to as well get the leave time.
Mr. Chairman, I, I don't think I could be more clear that I made a motion to amend the motion to a, a, adopt and keep the existing, um, policy in place with the addition of adding the statute. I mean, I, I don't know how I could be very, more clear. And as such, according to our rules, that motion passed. So I think we need to move on.
Well, I think that, I don't mind moving on, but I need some clear statute from our counsel stating that what happened in that, that vote is correct. No one's giving me no clear, any clear statute right now. I need a reference, I need a reference of clear statute. He says he doesn't have it right now.
And again, I asked the counsel if the, if our rules, um, the Board of Commissioners states that an abstention is in fact a yes vote. Always has been since I've been on this board.
Can one of our legal team look it up right now and give me the statute?
Well, it's, it's just this, at the end of the day, we had two commissioners that, that were confused in what was being said and what was being voted on. And, I mean, if, if you want to, if, whatever, if you want to be a stickler to the rules or, or however you want to take this, it's fine. But at the end of the day, like, the common decency thing to do is to say, okay, they don't understand it and vote again. If we don't have common decency at this board, then what do we have? You know, I mean, it wasn't just one that was confused, it was two. I understood what was being said, but, and some others did, some didn't. In all fairness, everybody understands what's being said now, so why not just vote on it again? If you have a problem or scared that your motion's not going to pass or upset, then, then that's just what it is. But if, if it passed, it only passed because people didn't understand what they were voting on. So how fair is that?
Uh, I'm, uh, like I say, I, I don't have a problem with voting on it again, but, uh, I got to go by the general statutes. I, you know.
But I'm pretty sure it's not a statute saying that we can't vote again.
And we sitting up here voting on something twice. And, I mean, I.
Where is the statute saying we can't do that, though?
I don't, I don't think it's a general statute. I think it's the actual rules that, that the commissioners has come up with in the past. Is that correct?
But that's fine too, but is there a rule saying we can't vote on it again? Exactly. So my point is regardless of whether, whatever rule there is, there not, there's not a rule saying we can't vote on it again. So simply, let's vote on it again to do the right thing.
And what general statute is that that you're looking at?
It's one fifty-three dash forty-four. That's the statute for excluding, um, excusing a member from voting. And then your, your rules, your procedure rules state that an extent, extension, if you don't vote, basically, it's a, it's a yes vote.
Okay.
But the, the statute regarding excluding someone from voting, excusing someone from voting for financial reasons is one fifty-three A dash forty-four.
That doesn't play into this vote, into this issue?
Because no one was excused.
Uh, Ms. Parker, if, correct me now. If, if they want to revote, I want a motion from somebody that we would revoke. Is that correct? Is that proper, or, or did you, do, do I just call for another vote? I'm, I'm covering Wayne now.
It, it's same, this, you've, the motion that was initially made was to change the policy that you'd adopted previously. Then that failed. Then the next motion was to adopt it again, but to add the, uh, general statute to it. So, so if somebody wanted to make a, yet another motion, if the board agreed, since it's not on the agenda, that if the board would agree to another one, majority of the board, you could have another motion.
Okay, I'm on, I'm on. I, I, can I take a vote to see who wants to take another vote? So, let me ask you a question. Didn't we, didn't, basically what we voted on was adding the general statutes, basically?
No, 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 no. My motion was very clear, and that was to keep the existing policy and only add reference to the statute.
But the policy's already in place.
Everybody didn't understand it.
It was, but he has a motion to rescind that and add unvaccinated. I amended his motion. And based upon our rules, it passed. Now, I mean, I, I'm sorry.
I understood you, Mr. Daughtry, it's when, uh, Miss vote. I didn't understand when she requoted.
My, my problem was, is that I did not see Mr. Williams raise his hand. And then, I, you have to understand, your screens block you. So if I don't see you, and that's why I asked, it, when you're unanimous, it's easy to see your hands raised when you're bringing them up and down quickly for a yes or no vote. And Commissioner Foster has, um, been a little delayed in a couple of his votes, so that's why I came back and asked for you guys to tell me, you know, or simply raise your hands again, or the chairman to call out each vote. So, because I had three yes, three no, one abstain. And I just wanted to make certain that I had all of that correct. So my apologies, but unless I stand up for each vote, I cannot see your hands. And we may need to go to, actually, as I asked him to do, have each one of you say yes or no, simply because.
Mr. Chair. Makes it easier for you.
It, it is difficult when everybody's.
First off, sorry for the confusion. Let me start there. Okay. Secondly, we know legally we can revoke again. I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that this resolution authorizing COVID-nineteen personal time off to fully vaccinated, full-time employees also be approved for non-vaccinated employees. And section eleven, the North Carolina general statute, one fifty-three A, be included in that.
Mr. Chairman, I, I have a problem with the fact that this board has taken action, and here we are basically continuing to de- debate and/or vote when the motion has already been made and passed.
I'm not going to call for another vote until this is clear that.
It appears that the first motion that was made was defeated, and that was to, uh, to rescind. And then the second motion, your amendment was, was to, uh, leave it as it was.
Let me correct. The first motion was made by Mr. Commissioner Foster to add unvaccinated to the policy.
I didn't make a motion.
You did not. So you not made a motion.
Commissioner Williams did. Commissioner Williams made a motion.
You made the motion.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams made a motion. Commissioner Williams made a motion. Commissioner Hardeston made an amendment which failed. You made an amendment to Mr. Williams.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Which is now what we're trying to.
But he had already made originally in a motion to add unvaccinated. We were amending his motion. That's correct. So a motion has already been made to add unvaccinated. I amended it to keep the existing. We in fact have, that has passed. Under our rules, it passed. Now we're having more discussion and going to make another motion, which was the original motion. And you're setting a precedent here that if you don't like the vote, then you can just continue right on vote. And I, and I, and before we voted on it, I asked for comments. You did. So I'm just saying that I'm afraid of the precedent you're making here to where if in fact a motion's made, is voted on, and we don't like the vote, then we'll just continue to make motions.
I don't think that's the case that we didn't like the vote. I think, I think the case was there was confusion in regard to it. So I don't think we should play with words and say we didn't like the vote. I think that, I think that, I think that you, I think that you, you are stressing that you don't like that the process could change as far as your vote and you losing. That's why you're debating really hard right now, sir. I think overall, you have to admit, we were, there was confusion in place. And I mean, we're adults here. We, this board usually can get through things really well. And, you know, I just think it's just reasonable to say, okay, let's just.
I have no problem with it. I have no problem if a motion is made to add to the agenda this matter. But you're going to have to adapt, you have to adjust the agenda.
It appears that Commissioner Williams' motion has been amended by your amendment.
Correct.
And so his motion as amended is still, could be, is still before the board.
His motion as amended?
Is still before the board.
Okay, then. So we could actually vote on his original motion as amended? So the amendment passed, but we have to vote on his original motion as amended? Is that correct?
And I just made a motion.
You can't make another motion.
Can't make another.
We're just going to vote on the original motion that you made to include unvaccinated with the amendment that we keep the existing policy as written. Is that correct?
I understood your amendment to change his motion for only vaccinated people, employees.
That is correct, to keep the existing.
So in effect, you'd be voting on that. You changed his motion, so that's.
I agree. All right. So we are voting on that. Okay.
You want to wait till he gets back, right? Because I want to keep it fair. I want to keep it fair.
Andrew, will you tell me one more time what we're voting on?
Ready, sir?
Yeah, it takes a lot to get up.
Can you explain to him really quickly so?
I know what we're voting on. Let's vote. If we're going to vote, let's do whatever. We're, we're making a mockery of the Board of Commissioners.
I don't, I don't think it's a mockery. I think it's just, just a clear understanding. And I'm trying to help you out. You went out trying to keep you in. Okay, let's vote it.
Commissioner Hardeston.
Andrew, just say it one more time.
The motion has been amended. So what you'd be voting on now would be to, that you would have the personal time off policy only apply to vaccinated employees with adding 153 dash, 153A dash 103 to the policy as well. So that's the motion that's in front of you.
So the motion is what he, what he stated basically the last time.
Right, because he's amended the motion, correct.
So we're voting for the vac, for vaccinated employees only?
Correct.
To have the time?
With the statutory.
With the statute added to it?
Yes, sir.
I'm good with that. Go ahead. Oh, we could take another vote?
A vote on, a vote on the amended motion.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor. Any more discussion? Because when we take this vote, that's it. Is there any more discussion? All in favor, show a sign of right hand. What's the vote, Madam Clerk? Anyone opposed? What's the vote, Madam Clerk?
The motion did pass, sir. Four to three.
Next item, Mr. Tonicut. Before you start. From now on, when we, someone makes a motion and I ask for discussion, we're going to discuss it fully. And then when we take a vote, that's it. So if you don't understand something before we vote on it, that's what the discussion time is for. But from now on, when I call for a vote, I'm going to ask for discussion and we discuss it as long as you want to. But when we take the vote, that's it.
Yes, sir. Number three under new business, motion to approve the design bid build with general contract prequalification process for the new Cary A. Wenders Detention Center site as recommended by the Wayne County Facilities Committee. Again, we approved our policy in the consent agenda today. And there's an email from our Mosley Architects also backing up the recommendation from the Facilities Committee.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the design bill, bid build with general contractor prequalification process for the new addition to the Cary Wenders Detention Center site as recommended by our Facilities Committee. And that's the form of motion. I have a motion on the floor. Any discussion? Anyone? If none, all in favor, show a sign of right hand. All opposed? Okay.
And number four, motion to approve TA Loving Company as the construction manager at risk for the new combined DSS and Health Department facility as recommended by the Wayne County Facilities Committee. Again, the Facilities Committee met, interviewed three proposed construction manager at risk companies and the vote came out to recommend TA Loving as the people to serve in that role.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve TA Loving Company as the construction manager at risk for the new combined DSS and Health Department facility. I have a motion on the floor. Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor, show a sign of right hand. All opposed likewise.
And then under county managers report, I have nothing at this time.
Board of Commissioners, committee reports. Commissioner Gurley.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Daughtry.
No comment.
Commissioner Williams.
Yes, I just want to, just keep it fresh in everyone's mind that there is a water issue, water sewage issue in Mount Olive. They're not getting enough press. A lot of people aren't really discussing it. As you could tell, Mount Olive is very valuable to Wayne County. It is part of Wayne County. Today we had Mount Olive College, Dr. Kroom come in and he has even stated that in order for the college to even grow, they need water, sewage, things of that nature. How long are we going to consider, not consider the needs of Mount Olive? I'm going to talk about it every two weeks. I'm going to talk about it until we sit down and we do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Barbara A. Cut.
Oh, I have nothing. Commissioner A. Cut.
Commissioner Foster.
A couple of weeks ago, I asked, well, Ms. Barbara wasn't here, but I asked the members of this board to follow the policy that we set with wearing a mask inside of the building while you're in the company of others. If we were in the office by yourself, that would be fine. I'm going to ask again, can y'all do something as simple as wear a mask during these meetings? I know it's hard to change. I know it's hard to do the right thing as we seek. But I think that motion passed six one when we, when we voted on it. So once again, can you wear a mask during our meetings to follow the policy that we all, that six of us voted on? Thank you.
Commissioner Hardeston.
I have, have two things. One, I just want to explain my, my vote on the vaccination, the vaccine policy. I was opposed to it. You know, you include, what we're doing is creating another benefit for county employees that is not present in the public sector. This may be paid for by COVID dollars and so on and so forth. But that's what I was opposed to, not including or excluding one group or the other. But I just think this is another policy where we're just spending money because we have the money. The second thing is, as Commissioner Williams stated, Mount Olive is very valuable to us. The state's looking at them now. There are no more tournaments, we all know. But as he said, we need to get some press and some agents taking place down there. And I commend you for bringing it up. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I have very little other than I just want to thank the first responders that were here today and the ones that were not here that were out doing their job. They are vital to Wayne County. And in reference to Mr. Foster's comment about the mask, I'm certainly not disagreeing with him. But, and we did vote on it and I do not have my mask on. I do forget. But also I have asked all the commissioners not to use their phones during the meeting. And I would like, I would appreciate it if y'all would abide by that. I've got mine off and I would ask that the rest of you cut yours off from now. Anything else, Mr. Tonicut?
We need to make sure we recess and then we will go back at one o'clock for the bridge dedication ceremony.
Do I need a motion or just recess?
Question, question. Is that a policy or is that just your request about the cell phone? Is that a policy?
It stays right here in red ink on the top.
I'm asking a question. Is it a policy? Is it a policy? Can you answer that question up?
I didn't say whether it was a vote. I just asked for your cooperation.
Well, that's what I thought.
So remember that. You just, the chair. I for request.